Seven o'clock, I'm gonna welcome everyone to the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, January twenty fourth. A reminder to everyone that's with us that the meeting is being recorded, it will be available on replay in the town's website in the next couple of days. We're gonna start by calling roll call member. Uh, Dave Hatfield. You're on me, Dave, but we see you, you're present.
Yep, I'm just doing the captions, sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
I think we're good now, they're enabled.
I should have waited and told you, thank you though. Chip?
Here.
Jim McBane?
Yeah.
Joe Pride?
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh?
Yeah.
Nikki Feely?
Here.
Assumi Humphreys?
Yeah.
And I'm Tom Lucy, uh, and I'm obviously here as well. Uh, I'm going to ask our clerk, uh, Joe Pride to read the legal notice.
Your thing. Uh, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you don't have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the phone dialing number one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight four five two two seven nine seven three zero one, pass code nine eight two five five three, please use, please only use dial in or computer not both as audio feedback will start the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disability Act, dislocation is accessible to people with disabilities, Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request, if you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, you or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renal, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request, advance notification will enable the town to make reasonable accommodations to remove an accessibility barrier for you, one continued hearings, two twenty four S thirty, twenty four S thirty one. Joseph Donaldin Christina, Christina Tama and Bridget C. Tama. Application for variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty six. For the, uh, requirements of section one ninety dash twenty two A one F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw relate to a proposed accessory apartment. Application for a special permit under Article four. Section one ninety dash twenty two A one F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking relief to add an accessory apartment to a single family dwelling, their property is shown as map twelve lot parcels. Lot parcel thirty six E of the assessment map in is located at Penn Central Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Before we get started, as is our custom, I have a, a letter asking for continuance, so uh, I will read that into the record and anyone here for that hearing, um, that matter will be continued regarding thirty two Nahant Street. Dear Mr. Chair, uh, at the board's hearing on January tenth, twenty twenty four, the applicant was requested to consider multiple changes to its proposed development. The applicant's team has been working diligently to revise the plans and to address the board's requested changes, but additional time is required to complete this work. Rather than waste the time of the board and to avoid the expense of appearing before the board before the plans have been updated, the applicant respectfully requests a continuance of the hearing tonight to the board's next available hearing date. The applicant agrees to extend the one hundred and eighty day period for the board to close the public hearing for a time commensurate with the time between tonight's hearing and the board's next hearing. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to our next hearing is on February fourteenth to continue this matter to the fourteenth.
So, Mr. Chair, point of order, they're also um granting us an extension, I'm, I'm wondering um on the hundred and eighty days, so I just want to be clear, we got that right, um.
The way the letter's worded, uh, I read it is that he's gonna give us, I think it's three weeks before our next hearing. The three weeks will do, those twenty one days will be added um, to the end of.
To the end of that hundred and eighty day period, okay. All right, I just, do we have a date for when that was supposed to be, or do we just say extend the date by three weeks for surrender? To close the public hearing? Gil or?
Let me check my notes.
Yeah, just if you know the date, otherwise we can capture it as extending by three weeks, but.
I'm not sure we have that date.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, Dave.
Okay.
We'll have to clarify.
Yeah, as long as we capture it, that it works standing by three weeks, um, okay. All right, so Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this, uh, hearing to the, uh, February fourteenth meeting and that we accept the, uh, applicant's request to extend the time for the board to, um, hold the public hearing, um, by, uh, a like time wise of three weeks from the original time we opened the hearing.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded, any discussion? That discussion, Dave, I'll just make sure I follow up with the town council to make sure that, uh, is done appropriately as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, hearing on others, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
You go to Mickey and Skip Jim on this, Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes, matters continue to the fourteenth. Um, next up is continued hearings cases twenty three forty three, twenty three forty four, twenty three forty five, twenty three forty six, twenty three forty seven, twenty three forty eight, twenty three forty nine, twenty three fifty, Granite Family Trust LLC located three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty six Salem Street. Mr. McGrail, I believe that's your case.
It is, Mr. Chair, uh, members of board, good evening, uh, for record attorney Brian McGrail representing the applicant. Um, uh, Jim Cook and Bill Mandel, the principals of the, uh, trust are here tonight as well as John Ogrin and Andy Zalewski, uh, who is our architect, John, as you know, is our site civil engineer. Um, we, uh, I think you anticipated, we hope to close this out, we hope, had hoped to close this out uh, tonight, but I think we're gonna need one more meeting to do so because in reconciling our final plans, we made a determination that we have to do a I'll call it a tweak, a small adjustment on our site plan um, to put the common driveway uh, in sync with how it's been approved on the planning board plan, it was a little bit off and, and it's gonna result in us having to, um, um, tweak the uh, landscape plan a little bit out back and, uh, lot two as well. So, Mr. Tabell is a designated member, we'll work with him on that, but um, we can't close this matter out with your board until, um, we accomplish that and there wasn't enough time to do that, we, we realized that was an issue um, just a couple of days ago, so, um, but I think we'll be able to, uh, have that done, uh, by the next meeting and, um, we're saddened by the fact that I don't think Mr. McBane will be able to vote on this after he's worked so hard on it and thank him for all his efforts on the architectural aspects, that is in, um, all good order, um. But in any event, uh, so our site plan is gonna be modified a little bit, but we have submitted final architectural immaterial plans. Um, we submitted those last week. I'm happy to have Andy go through those if you'd like, um, or perhaps you've had a chance to review them and you're fine with them, uh, it's your prerogative on those, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I'd ask for the pleasure of the board, I've seen them, I don't have any questions, but I wanna speak for the board. I think what we should do is go through that if people have questions and then go through the draft conditions and everything else just to tee this up for, uh, the next hearing on the fourteenth for a vote. So, any questions on the new submittals on the site plan?
No, and I'll be happy to work with the, with them offline to make sure that the A and R and and this plan line up correctly. And tweak any landscaping necessary to make that happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, um, I'm, I'm no longer a voter on this, um, so I would ask two things, one, make sure you've got the votes covered um, for next time. Um, so it's Claire who, who will ultimately potentially be voting. Um, and second, I, I may have missed it if the final decision was made, but I did note on the final plans, I did look at them. Um, did the parties agree that there would be no designated visitor parking on this site? And where would visitors be parking potentially? Unless I missed it on the plan. I didn't see any of the parking space that designated visitor.
Yeah, and, you know, just like three sixty nine Main Street, three seventy one, that did not have any, you know, I, I know you've required that at ten Broadway, but for small projects like this, um, you know, it typically hasn't been done.
We haven't designated it, but there's num, there's enough that there is.
There's more than enough, yeah, there's excessive.
Right, but we haven't numbered them and you're not charging for parking under the building, correct?
No.
Okay, I, yes, we didn't, but again, the one on the chest, I, I, yeah, there's plenty of parking around Main Street, I'm not worried about that, I just don't know if the, if the parking was tight here, I didn't know how it was being handled. Um, you know, the parking situation on Salem is a different situation, right?
In, in, yes, and it, and it hasn't been discussed, so, you know, I don't wanna make it like it has, so we, we're open to discuss it, but we just didn't, we just assumed that it wouldn't be an issue, but if we're, our assumption is wrong, we, we, you know, we want the board to be satisfied with the project, so um, that's your prerogative.
I mean, I would recommend at least two spaces be designated visitor, even if there's sufficient for everyone else, cause before you know it over time, the residents have taken over, you know, the rest of the parking and then visitors have nowhere to go, so. Um, again, different areas of town, there might be opportunities to park on a main street or side streets, this one perhaps not as much, so that's my recommendation to the board to consider that again for before we button this one up.
Yeah, Jim, I see you hand up, but before we leave this issue, is that the approach that folks wanna take? Cause if so, if they've gotta tweak some other things, this can be added to the plans.
Yeah, and just so the board knows, just so you want, you know, um, for your information as you discuss this, so, uh, the required parking on this is twenty nine and we have thirty three. Just for, just for your knowledge, that might be helpful.
But to Dave's point then, it should be pretty easy to just locate a couple of visitors.
Yeah, I don't, uh, Jim Cook, you're here, right? You don't have an issue with that, right?
No. I, 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 let me say that I think this has come a long ways uh, between my dealing with the architecture and Chip dealing with the landscape. It's a huge change from where we started. And I do agree with Dave basically on this one. It wasn't something we've discussed really, but um, I agree that, you know, someone's gonna take it over basically if it isn't designated. And there's certainly no way in that location parking on a street. I mean, you have to get down a, a block or so and park on a side street, I guess, is the only thing, the only possibility really. Or park on the roadway coming in or something. So I, I would agree with Dave on this, uh, but I, but, uh, having said all that, um, if I was a voting member, I would be voting to move this forward. Unfortunately, this is, keeps on slipping. And, uh, here I am unable to vote on it, but, you know, the rest of you have to do your thing. All right, that's it.
So this is Jim Cook to answer Attorney McGrail's question, we, we have no objection to adding the two visitor spots.
Okay, thank you, I just think it's prudent and avoids any potential issues.
Um, so, but to your other point, this is, I'm glad you're speaking up, cause it, we're trying to tee this up for a vote and just so members know, there's only gonna be four members voting on this. So if, if you have issues, tonight's the night to speak up now or forever hold your peace, and the, the votes will be Chip, Joe, Greg and myself. Cause if this goes smoothly tonight, my intention that the next meeting would merely just open the meeting and take a vote and be done with it, so. Um, Brian, if you, any other questions on the material that was submitted? Cause I do think we should go through the conditions quickly.
I'm happy to do that. So i- is it okay if I share those, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
And I made one little change to them, uh, for my discussion with the building inspector uh, this week. Um, which I'll go over with the board, I've redlined it when we get, get to it. Um, so the conditions, I, I, um, many of them are typical, uh, the, so I'm not gonna read them all verbatim, the first one you're familiar with, it requires um, your retained jurisdiction on minor amendments and to settle disputes um, or discrepancies, uh, with the building inspector. Um, we have to provide contact information, that's number two, to all the relevant town officials. Um, the project has to be shown as shown on the final site plan, final architectural drawings and final landscaping plan, we have to require with all notes and requirements stated on the plans. Um, number four is the typical that we, um, have to, um, submit um, uh, uh, matching, uh, when, when we submit to the building inspector with the building permit, we have to give the board matching plans for the board to confirm that what we've submitted to the building department is in sync with what, um, uh, what the board approved. And I talked to, uh, building inspector to Christopher about this, as you know, uh, board member McBane has performed yeoman's work on this, uh, task. Um, and, 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 uh, Ben and I talked about the fact that um, there might not be time for other board members to do this, so it's always an, an issue that kind of falls on Ben and so he's required that we add this language that I've typed in red um, to kind of put it on the applicants and our professionals and what it says is furthermore, at the time of applying for a building permit, the applicant's architect and site civil engineer and landscape architect shall provide the building inspector assigned and stamped affidavit certifying that the plans and drawings submitted with the building permit application are the same as the final site plan, the final architectural drawings and the final landscape plan. So, I'm sure while the engineers on here, John Ogrin and Peter Sandors, you're probably not happy with this, but it's something that the building inspector is gonna now require that, um, you know, basically put the onus on the applicant to, um, have his professionals make a representation to the building department with their stamp and signature that the plans match.
And, and quite honestly, Brian, this is no different than being controlled construction. They have to do this when it gets built and say that it's built as per plan. This does not prevent us from taking a look at them before Ben does as well.
That's right.
He has time, it doesn't prevent us from doing that. Uh, it's just another layer, which I think is good. Um, cause certainly if there's time or we grab a set, somebody can take a look and not with the diligence that Jim has done in the past years, but certainly can check main and, and issues that may have come up to make sure that a certain aspect of it or what, but I think that's a great idea.
Did, I'd, I'd also add Chip that we, um, my employer, as with my employer, we do this in other towns, other towns, this is a not an uncommon practice, um, to put it back on the applicant to to sign those affidavits, so. Um, and if, if this is the approach that Ben wants to take, with I think we should be supportive of it.
Okay, um, number five. The applicant should provide a, a markup panel to site displaying sample materials for the mid-rise apartment building on lot eleven on the final site plan and is as typical. Um, I made a change on this at the end, like you have done with, uh, cabin cabinet force minor modification, it says the markup panel should be completed by the time the particular items required to be on the markup panel are put on the building. Um, instead of when the foundation goes in. Um, number six, the applicant shall comply with the, uh, contents of the O and M plan. Um, number seven, in the event there's conflicts between the decision and the final site plan, final architectural drawings, the final landscape plan, the plan shall control. Uh, the next one, number eight, is the applicant should provide infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to the installation of a new sidewalk along the entire frontage of the property and actually, this has to be tweaked, um, uh, because we're not, because there's gonna be a contribution on this, so we changed this with the town engineer and so I'm just gonna make a note of this and you'll see it pop up. So, what it should say is the, the installation of the new sign, which is going on, um, the other side of Main Street, the no left hand turn sign. So I'm just gonna make a note of that, Mr. Chair, and you'll see the sidewalk issue come up below and the financial, just to refresh the board's memory, we can't do the sidewalks on this project because of envision, um, because it won't be timed, so we're gonna make a financial contribution to the town in that regard.
We're talking Salem or Main Street?
Brian, I think you're mixing up Salem and.
Oh, you know what, you're right.
Made reference to Maine.
God, what a brain cramp, sorry about that. Thanks for correcting me. Hang on, let me go back.
This doesn't need to get changed, they're gonna be allowed to take a left hand turn.
Yeah, sorry, you guys probably looking at me like you got three heads with this, I apologize, so thank you for, uh, correcting me, you're right. Um, okay, next, during construction onsite parking restricted to specific personnel in designated areas onsite, it will, uh, be relocated and eliminated at the sole discretion direction of the project superintendent, nor the onsite parking is allowed. Um, this, this one I wanted to point out because I think this is kind of the typical condition, but in the past on projects that are kind of in neighborhood areas, you've put a provision, no, no on-street parking, that you, you don't want, you know, the contractors parking in the neighborhood, so I don't know if you want that on this one also.
You know, Brian, I, what, I don't think they should be parking in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean typically, we have, you have typical language of that, I can insert in, um, which, which, you know, you'll see it on the final one that I submit, cause I'm gonna clean this up for the next meeting that, that talks about, there'll be no, no off-street parking in the, in the neighborhoods, neighboring streets. No off-site parking.
Well, there's a couple parking lots that they could rent spaces from if they needed to.
Right, yeah.
Locally, they're pretty close.
No on-street parking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, the next one is a typical one on landscape. Um, and then the affordable components, which you're very familiar with. So there's gonna be a total of, uh, three affordable units with this project. And that's all pretty standard signage, retaining jurisdiction. The I and I, uh, contribution for the sewer infiltration. Um, and then this one I think is important to the board, this is a new condition that you've recently, uh, come up with. Prior to, number sixteen, prior to commencing any site work demolition into a construction collectively to work, the applicant shall meet with the police department, fire department, department of public works and the building department to discuss terms, including but not limited to delivery times, sequencing procedures related to work and the applicant shall comply with any requirements of said departments, this was a, this, a condition that was created by Greg that went, that kind of worked with, um, three sixty nine, three seventy, uh, seventy one Main Street.
I mean, it's more important for downtown projects, but I think it's good to do them for all.
Yeah, it's, but this is a tricky intersection, I, I think we, we're going on it here.
Um, and then, as you know, we, we, we have to deal with Salem Street, the repaving, so this is, uh, request of the town engineer, the applicant should comply with the requirements of the Department of Public Works Engineering Division regarding any street openings, utility connections and required pavement restoration of Salem Street related to the project. Next, the applicant should provide draft language for the utility easement shown for the site plan to the Department of Public Works review and approval prior to recording, because we're gonna have a, a bunch of utility easements on this property between lots. Um, is requested.
Do you wanna make that language in eighteen mirror the, the drainage easement language in twenty? Um, rather than just being shown to the pub, the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, have it, you know, the content reasonably satisfactory to town council and department of public works?
Yeah.
Basically the same exact language, just change that it's the drainage easement to the uh, what is this one, utility easement?
Yeah, it makes sense, Greg, yep. I'll just make a note and you'll see it, I'll change it, but that's a point well taken. Um, okay. So, uh, number nineteen is requested by the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee, applicant shall offer and if accepted, provide a fifteen thousand dollar contribution to town Wakefield to be used towards crosswalk and signalization relocation on Salem Street at the discretion of the town, say contribution accepted should be made prior to the issuance of the building permit. Um, what they're doing here is they're making a contribution for this intersection, which is gonna be great, it's gonna provide one of those crosswalk flashing signals that if somebody wants to cross the street, they hit the button and, um, it's, it flashes so people can see it, that people are trying to cross the street. Um, number twenty, is requested by the Department of Public Works, uh, Engineering Division, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall execute and deliver a drainage easement on lot thirteen is shown on the final site plan to the town of Wakefield, the form and content reasonably satisfactory to town council and the Department of Public Works Engineering Division. Um, this is a, this is a, a major contribution engineering department for the neighbors in fact, uh, that are very happy with this, because we're gonna give a, a very significant easement in the back of our property, um, which is going to facilitate the resolution of a long-term drainage problem back on Mitchell Lane in, um, in unit circle, they have nothing to do with this project, but this is gonna really help them, so the town engineer is very happy with this as, uh, as, as I know one of the others does as well. Um, and then in that regard, uh, as requested by the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, the applicant, applicant shall offer and if accepted, provide a thirty five thousand dollar contribution to improve stormwater drainage conditions in the vicinity of the property. So I think that's gonna go right to that area as well. And then lastly, I mentioned this at the last meeting that, um, is it, there is a there's a puddling issue that the town is having out on Salem Street right now, um, that has nothing to do with this and the town engineer feels that we can also help with this. Um, and my clients are more than happy, um, um, ready, willing and able to help. We actually tried to redesign our plan to allow for this uh, prior to, uh, closing it out and the town engineer just agreed, it's just gonna be a little bit too complicated to do that. Um, because what it might actually allow us to do is to get rid of some swales on our property and tie into this. Um, so, we, we both agreed that we're, we're gonna continue to work on this and we're pretty much committed to finding a way to help the town uh, as Bill Renault knows, to solve the problem on Salem Street, like it would in essence give a, a drainage easement uh, all, uh, for a pipe that will go right through our property from Salem Street and would connect into the drainage system in unit circle, um, to alleviate the problem on Salem Street. So again, nothing to do with our project, but a, a huge benefit to the area, so. Uh, this condition says the board recognizes that the applicant is working with the Department of Public Works Engineering Division to try to accommodate their request to provide an easement on the property in town of Wakefield to help the town address existing drainage issues on Salem Street that have nothing to do with the project. In the event the applicant and Department of Public Works Engineering Division can come to an agreement regarding said easement, the board may in its discretion, your discretion, allow changes to the board's decision, including the final site plan and final landscape plan to allow for said easement as a minor amendment. We think it will be, you would determine that, but Bill Renault just wanted us to kind of put this as a placeholder to put it on your radar. Um, and, and I think we're gonna be able to do it, I think it'll be a big benefit to the town.
So, Ryan, that's all well and good and I understand Bill's uh, thought of putting it on our radar, but it doesn't do anything, we always retain jurisdiction. And the, the, the problem I would have is, is this creating some sort of conflict that we're saying it is a minor amendment? If anything has to do with the drainage easement, it is a minor amendment, um, based on the words that said, you know, yes, you put in discretion, but it says allow for said easement as a minor amendment. If for some reason then we say, no, it's, it's not a minor amendment, this creates at least an avenue for someone to to attack that, I'd rather just, uh, it's on our radar now. Take it out and we always retain jurisdiction. Uh, no, no matter what anyone ever says.
I don't disagree with you, I mean, I, what you're saying makes absolute sense to me, I mean, we're, you know, I mean, Jim, you're, Jim Cook, you're here, right?
Do we take?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, Jim, I mean, you're, we, you know, we're, we're committed to try to work with Bill and help him on this, right? I mean, we've, we're.
Yes.
Our plan is.
Talking with Bill, we've been talking with Bill a few times and we're working together, I think in a, um, in the best approach for the town and the project, so I, I don't see a problem with that from my end.
Well, it's like Greg, I agree with you, I mean, you know, I, I think it can, you know, it, it, it really doesn't do anything, you're right.
It puts no one on the hook and all it does is create ambiguity.
Yeah, that's.
Or, I, I should say, the only possibility it, it is, it creates ambiguity.
I don't think Cook is gonna have a problem if it comes out, you know, our plan is, you know, is, you know, as soon as we, as soon as the board moves forward on this, we're actually gonna set up a meeting with Bill the next week to, to meet with him to kind of go over the details, so we might be coming back with something you know, in the next few months afterwards.
So I have a question, are we eliminating all of twenty two or just the words minor amendment?
Take out the whole thing.
Yeah.
No need. It does, it doesn't do anything.
I mean, it could, it could say the applicant shall work with the DBW to accommodate their request, so it puts them on the hook to work with them to try to
If they wanna do that, that, that's fine.
And then you just leave it at that, you take out the rest, but you just say, look, the condition is, it's part of this special permit approval, they're committed to working with the DBW to try to solve this problem. If anything changes in our plans, then to your point, Greg, it all goes back to our discretion of whether it's minor or moderate needs a public hearing.
I mean, I guess then, again, the only thing that puts them on the hook for you can send one email and say, we worked with them. We're not gonna do it, it doesn't really.
We're gonna work with them, I mean, and, and I think at the end of the day, it might actually benefit our property too, because we might be able to get rid of some swales that would improve our backyards and stuff like that, cause we'd be able to tie into it as well, so. Um.
And I, I, I'm not really worried about them not working with them, we've already delayed for, they delayed it for two weeks when they could have gone forward without this, you know? But the town asked them to delay, so they've already showed a commitment to doing it, so.
Um, just take it out.
I'm fine with that, but, you know, I'm not, it's not a hill I wanna die on, whatever the board wants, you know?
That's it. Yeah, again, if the engineering department really wanted something.
Yeah, again, if the engineering department really wanted something in here, I'm just trying to appease them too and.
I don't think he really, uh, I don't, you know, we we have a working relationship with him um on on, you know, on you know, historically, on on the other project that uh Jim and Bill did, they've worked with the town that, you know, they're they're good, they're good corporate citizens. They're gonna, they're gonna try to do it. I mean, they they've already, they already have Hayes Engineering. They again spending more of their money on on recently, you know, they had, they've already had Hayes draw a plan showing the town how he could do it. So in in the in the hiccup on it was we get a kind of, what we have to work on, we already have the plan to do it. Um, but it's gonna, it it's really, really a cost breakdown that we're gonna have to deal with on how we're gonna share the cost of putting the pipe in. So I'd rather just take it out and I'll tell the town engineer we're committed to do it.
Yes.
So that's what we have.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Board? Then the only other thing that we might want to review, I I'm fine with it, um is the O and M plan. Does anyone have any questions? We received that on Friday. Does anyone uh ha- after having reviewed it, or if you didn't get a chance to review it, do you have any questions you want to go over?
No, at this point, it's pretty similar to what we've done many times.
No comments.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, hearing none. I don't think we need to do that. Anything else, Brian?
No, so I think um I think we're we're at a good spot to move forward, assuming we can resolve these issues with Chip, Mr. Chair, for the next meeting and 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 on a positive note and close this out.
Yep. And as I said before, board members, if you have anything, uh, I think, given, you know, our agendas lately, it it's it'll be our intention to just open this, take the vote and move on. Um, maybe quickly review these conditions to make sure that the changes are in there. But we'll, I'm assuming, Brian, you'll have them in Friday before anyway. So we'll have a chance to have looked at them as well. So.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, can we close the public hearing?
No, not gonna submit new material on the plan, Chip.
Okay, with that, um.
In your extent, you're extended to the twenty-ninth of February on this right now. So you're.
We're in okay spot there. Okay, that was my next question. All right, anything else, board members, before I throw it open to the public? Brian, if you could just stop sharing so I can see.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any members here uh from the public that would like to comment on this case? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Hearing and seeing none, back to the board. Ledger of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna defer to a voting member on this one.
Oh, I move that we continue this to our February fourteenth meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none. Uh, we'll go with Chip, Joe, Greg, myself, and Mickey. Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mickey, I don't think you can vote on this one, so I'm gonna, we'll just stick with the four. All right, that motion is uh passed and this is continued to the fourteenth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members.
Yep, next case is twenty-three seventy, twenty-three seventy-one, twenty-three seventy-two, A and E Realty Trusts.
Uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing A and E Realty Trust, uh with me tonight is um Andreas Cidos, who is um the um entity representative and owner of of the subject property. Um, Scott Fitzpatrick, I believe, is here. He's our uh construction supervisor um who will be building this property. And Peter Sandors, and I think Steve DeFuria here also um from uh Phoenix Architects. This uh um development is, the board is aware, is in a similar position as uh the one on Salem Street. Um, we have submitted what we deem to be our final site plan, uh final architectural drawings, um a draft O and M and conditions. Um, and um I think um we're hopeful that we actually can close this one out tonight. I know um the town administrator and some of the town councillors are very um um very anxious to to get this project going um in the area of downtown, a very important area. So I got a call from the town administrator uh this week saying, you know, uh assume if the board uh decides to vote on this, uh once your client can start construction. And um he's already in the process of pulling a demo permit. Um, and uh we anticipate that he's gonna start on this right after the uh any appeal period expires in the event the board votes to approve it. So again, with this one, um I'll defer to you, Mr. Chair, and how do you'd like me to proceed?
Does anyone have any questions about the materials? If not, we, I think we should do the same thing. We should take a quick look at the O and M if people have questions and then look at the draft conditions as well. How's the board feel about that?
Yeah, I'm fine with the O and M. I feel that we can go right to draft conditions if you want to.
Get on.
Yes, I'm good.
Same.
Okay, anybody else? It sounds like we can go right to the draft conditions, Brian.
Hey, hopefully I get these ones right.
Um.
I wanna redline the sidewalk with the no left turn quickly. I crack myself up sometimes when I have lack of sleep.
Bring the right ones up. Here we go. So I don't think I need to be uh repetitive because these are pretty standard for projects of these nature, of this nature. Um, so one through four, again, the change that we talked about with the plans, the mock-up panel, the O and M plan, the conflicts, um and this one has the applicants provide infrastructure improvements, including not limited, no left-hand turn sign on the upper side Main Street. So we'll leave that the way it is. Um. Again, um, so I don't know, number nine, how you want to handle this um as far as parking goes. Um, do you also want to say not no on-street parking?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think we can have them take up every spot in front of that place.
Downtown.
Downtown.
Yep.
Yeah, hot dog. We just went through all that renovations and yeah.
Yep, so I'll make a note change on that for construction, uh the affordable component. Um, okay, so. One, so it basically it's gonna, it's going to be um three affordable units?
Brian, back on nine for a minute.
Yep.
Um, so when we say no parking on Main Street, who are you applying this to?
The co- any contractors. I've got language that you've used in the past on that, any construction personnel.
Okay, all right.
During construction.
Yep.
So, you know, the goal is, you know, with the downtown parking that you don't want the the, you know, the subcontractors taking up all the spaces downtown.
Right, okay.
Okay, um, so the affordable units we just talked about, signage. Um, the I and I fee is number fourteen. Uh, again, the meeting with the department heads for um requirements. Number sixteen is requested by the traffic advisory committee. The applicant shall offer and if accepted, provide a ten thousand dollar contribution be used towards uh that's done twice. Okay, future traffic mitigation at the discretion of the town. Um, seventeen is requested Department of Public Works Engineering Division. The applicant shall offer and accept it, provide a twenty thousand dollar contribution in town to be used to improve sidewalks in the vicinity of the project. So that's the envisioned contribution. And that's it.
So going back to, you said you're, yeah, I don't know what it is, the one where they have to have a meeting with the town officials.
Yep.
Um, you're in the process of pulling a demo permit?
Yeah, Andreas or Scott, are you here?
Has that meeting been set up yet?
No.
Okay, so if you're in the process of pulling, you know, to get those people together is sometimes a challenge, I would start trying to set that meeting up.
We can do that. Yep, that's a point well taken. I know, I know, uh, uh, construction supervisor is talking to Scott, but you're right, that, you know, we we, that's a point well taken, Chip. We'll do that.
Also, this is close to the school, so do we have um delivery time? Restrictions?
With with number fifteen, it's included.
Yeah, so Greg, we.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, you're right. You're right.
I think you wrote it, Greg.
Probably. We got it.
Great, uh.
Number fifteen.
No, I wrote it. Greg changed it four times.
Justify my existence as a lawyer.
Any other comments or questions?
They look good.
Okay, hearing seeing none, uh. Given that, board members, uh I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that is wishes to uh say or speak on this project or a proposal? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Who are the voting members on this one, Mr. Chair?
I have that right here.
I believe uh those eligible to vote are regular voting members and Greg. So we'll go regular voting members.
Mr. Chair, um, there's a few motions here uh to be potentially made. Um, we'll start with uh first one and and for all of these, they will be based on the conditions um as reviewed and amended this evening. And as well, the final site plan by Engineering Alliance dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the final architectural drawings by Phoenix Architects dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety thirty-two and one ninety forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing a sixteen-unit garden apartment in combination with retail stores and or service establishments or restaurant uses as shown on the final site plan and final architectural drawings. We make these findings. A, the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations requiring a special permit in the district for which the application, application is made. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. There is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. C, the requested use will not create or add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. D, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. E, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. F, the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. This use will put a vacated, emblazoned property to a beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. G, the requested use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. It will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not noxious to the residential use. And person, not section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, the board has also reviewed this section, which in pertinent state uh part states, in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority um shall consider, among other things, the following. One, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties or improvements. Two, adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, refuse, and other waste and the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. And three, the provision for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the building and related uses on the lot. The board has considered all of the above rents for its criteria and is satisfied. Um, and again, this this motion is made with the conditions already presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two dot one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing reductions and or alterations to the dimensional requirements under section one ninety thirty-two D and table two of the bylaw relating to a sixteen-unit garden apartment in combination with the retail stores or service establishments or restaurant uses as shown on the final site plan and final architectural architectural drawings, including the following. A, allowing a floor area ratio of one point six three. B, allowing an open area of six point five percent. C, allowing lot coverage of seventy-five point seven percent. And D, allowing a reduction in the required front, side, and rear yard setbacks to be that as shown on the final site plan. And E, any other reductions or alterations from the requirements of one ninety thirty-two D and table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan, architectural plans, and final landscaping plan. The same findings as the last special permit. Uh, and furthermore, the these reductions and or alterations will enhance the multifamily project as a whole and allow it to benefit the neighborhood in which it is situated. This motion is also made with the same conditions already presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, right, same voting members, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
And finally, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a special permit pers- pursuant to section one ninety thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, reducing the requirements of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw as follows. A, section one ninety thirty-seven C, reducing the required size of some of the parking spaces to allow them to be the sizes as shown on the final site plan. B, section one ninety thirty-seven D, reducing the required width of the aisles to allow the aisle widths as shown on the final site plan. C, one ninety thirty-nine, off-street loading and parking, reducing the number of required off-street loading bays pursuant to one ninety thirty-nine of the bylaw to a total of zero. D, one ninety uh forty-one, reducing the number of required parking spaces pursuant to one ninety forty-one, table three of the bylaw, and allow a total of twenty-two parking spaces for the sixteen residential dwelling units and retail stores or service establishments or restaurant uses as shown on the final site plan and the final architectural drawings with no limit on the number of seats or number of employees at the restaurants. E, any other necessary reductions in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking loading under article seven of the bylaw relating to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural drawings. Findings on this motion uh include that the board finds that the application of standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to lack of suitable land, design considerations, or other similar factors. The granting of such special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood or district of the town. Furthermore, the board determined that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way as to hinder the safe entry or exit of a vehicle from any driveway to the street or restrict visibility at the corner of two streets. This motion is made with the same conditions already presented.
I'll second that motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I'll only add, Jim, I think this is your last vote. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the town, for the board, for anything else. I'm glad it's on a good project.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So am I.
We'll go to a vote. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
I vote yes. That is unanimous as well.
And with that, Jim, we will miss you.
Jim, thanks so much, Jim.
All right, I'll see you, guys.
Take care.
Take care, Jim. We'll talk to you soon.
Yep.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you could mute yourself. I'm hearing some background coming off your phone. Thank you. Next up, case twenty-four ten, the residents at Nahant LLC located at one nineteen Nahant Street. Mr. Pono, so you here? Okay, I see you now. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chair, uh Chairman and members of the.
Evening, Mr. Chair, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jason Panoz. For the record, practicing law at two four sixty Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm joined by Stefano Baso from SB Design. We're actually at his offices together and Tony Capachetti at Hayes Engineering, who is remote. If I may, through the chair, I'm sorry, I'm hearing a little feedback. Is that?
I'm here, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, so I think either Dave or I got him.
All right. So if I can through the chair, just clear up some administrative matters. In light of Mr. McBane coming off the board, I'd just like to clarify who the voting members are on this petition and who is being elevated among your associate members in his place. Are you able to give me that information or is it still being sorted?
All the alternative board members can vote on any case as long as they are there appropriately. So it doesn't matter. We can, between our alternates, we can come up with enough voting members.
Okay, so but do you have a roster of fixed members on this application?
Yeah, we keep track of every.
And if you could just review for me who they are, just so, because I'm a little confused. You you've had a full complement, almost full complement of board members since the beginning. And I I just want to clarify in my own mind who the fixed voting members are, and I understand you'll have some associates coming on here and there perhaps, but.
Yeah, I'll check that out with Mr. Mull and make sure that's communicated with you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And by the way, thank you for the continuance at your January tenth meeting. The other question I have is what is the status of the organization of your subcommittee? Because as I understand it, is that subcommittee that's going to basically guide the peer review for the for the board? Is that correct?
Our intention to establish a subcommittee at tonight's hearing.
Okay, at tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Excellent. And I think you also mentioned that Ezra Klein might be joining at some point on this application. Do you have a status?
We haven't determined that yet. That'll be amongst the board tonight.
All right. Excellent. Thank you for that. So with that, we have a technical presentation to to make. We gave you supplementary materials. The PowerPoint includes those supplementary materials that we're going to present tonight and materials you already have. I'm happy to give Gail Conroy this kind of consolidated PowerPoint that basically focuses on the design elements that the board was interested in hearing about at the last at the last hearing. And also, Tony Capachetti is going to be presenting a SWAP plan, which will talk about how certain emergency apparatus will will circulate through the site. And also, I understand that our traffic study will be complete in time for the next hearing, which I'm hearing is on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth.
Right, have you scheduled time before the the town's traffic advisory committee?
The traffic study will go directly to them. Is that the way you want it?
They generally hold a hearing, but yes, it goes to them.
Okay, so that that will definitely happen. Well, I don't want to say definitely, but I understand that will happen at least prior to not the hearing, but the submission of the materials to the TAC. We were also prepared to give you a copy of those materials simultaneously.
Yes.
Do you want to wait for the TAC?
No.
Okay, perfect. So with that, if we could share a screen and we could start going through the the presentation.
Yeah, please do. I was, I I will say, though, that I was a bit surprised to only see three new things submitted. Did we miss something or am I not reading the file right? But when I looked at the submission, there was one elevation from the west, one elevation from the east, and a picture of materials, and then the the item that you said, I think you called it a SWAP study.
SWAP plan.
Yeah, SWAP plant. Is that the entirety of your new submittal?
Yes, although you might recall, we had a rather extensive presentation prepared at the last hearing that where the board, the pleasure of the board was to abbreviate that. And because a lot of the a lot of that presentation dealt with the very design issues that you wanted to hear about tonight, we thought it would be a good idea to take that opportunity to go into that in more detail.
It wasn't just design, it was massing too. I think it was pretty clear.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I if I can, I I thought we were really talking about massing more than design, that the overall concept of the the project, and we also talked about that it was going to be very way too big, and many of us stressed that. So I was surprised, as you were, not to see any information on the massing, the way it fits into the neighborhood, the way it fits into the lot, or any attempt at reduction in size. So I was surprised, as you were, at the material submitted.
Yeah, I.
I'm sorry.
No, yeah, I thought we were pretty clear on that, and we had made a number of requests for different types of renderings, the two of which you did. And then the the massing and the number of units were going to be key elements of the discussion tonight, so. Again, I'm just a little bit surprised to that what we got and frankly, underwhelmed. So. Why don't we proceed with what our presentation?
Sure. But before we go further, I will say I think it's premature to start talking about density reductions. And we're not really, we're not going to entertain density reductions until we can get through some element of peer review that will lead us in that direction. So I I appreciate the opportunity to to proceed with our presentation tonight and and supplement, continue to supplement materials. I I do recall at the last hearing that it was our general consensus that these design massing site issues would not be confined to one hearing, but would probably span over at least a couple of hearings. So to the extent that we that the board is requesting more materials, we will work with you to supplement what what we're going to present tonight. So is that reasonable?
I guess it's the only, we'll have to accept it for now, so.
Okay, great.
We only have what we have for tonight, so let's get through.
Excellent. So if you could go to the first slide, oh, the second slide. There you go. Just to reappoint you with the site, the site is fronted by Nahant Street. It's comprised of four parcels, currently improved by two dwelling houses that are that you can see are fronted by fronted on Nahant Street with an industrial building in the back and some industrial storage and open space as as you go further back is the lot kind of tapers. With that, I'm going to call on Tony Capachetti to present the SWAP plan.
Thank you. Tony Capachetti, Hayes Engineering, six oh three Salem Street. We did run the the Wakefield fire apparatus through the site. As you can see, it can the the more difficult turn being the right-hand turn, the left-hand turn is a lot wider. I can enter coming from Main Street North Ave, heading down towards Farm Street, take a right into the site, maneuver through the site, and then it uses the eastward parking lot as a hammerhead and reverse and exit the site. This information is going to be part of the the traffic submittal to TAC and including site distance analysis, Q analysis and the like, but that was one of the questions that that did come up, just the the fire apparatus. And the fire department does sit on the TAC, so we'll have in-depth discussions with that. You know, and that I believe, you know, as Jason said, the goal was to 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 own in on the architecture tonight, set up the subcommittee, and then begin some discussions on the architecture, which will lead to some refinement of the site plan as we go forward.
Okay, I appreciate that, because it's, if anyone has any questions about this, I'd prefer to to wait until we we have our public safety subject matter experts available to to be part of this discussion, but I'm happy to entertain any questions from board members on this. So, Mr. Pano, so just for a note, I I know you're going before the the Traffic Advisory Council, but it would be more my intention to have the public safety dialogue relative to this project before the full board with members of the appropriate public safety agencies from the town at a public hearing of this board. So that's going to be my intent. I've got to talk to the town manager about that.
But Jim and Lucy, do do you think it makes sense for us to go through TAC and have some of that discussion first? Make refinements? And then come back to the board once we've addressed some of those comments that come up through TAC rather than have multiple hearings in front of the board on on items that could be resolved through TAC?
I I have to talk to the town manager about that.
Just a just a thought, Tom, from on my end is, I understand what Tony's saying, but it's not, you know, traffic handles just the traffic basis. There's a lot more to this than to the public safety of this than simply how does a traffic and how does a apparatus get in and out? So I think the rest of those discussions sort of go hand in hand with, especially how does an apparatus get in and out? I know this is a swept analysis. Yeah, it can happen, but I mean, there's a lot of turns in this. Is that really what we want to have our firefighters go through if there's a you know, if they have to get out in an emergency? I think that needs to happen here and not at traffic. That's.
Greg, I agree. And other parts of the fire chief level talked about accessing certain parts of the building. So that's why I believe the public safety discussion should happen at this board with those subject matter experts attending a public hearing at this board. That's my thought process. Could some of the issues?
What we've done, Mr. Chair, in the past, which is right along with your thought processes, we've had them go to TAC, get TAC recommendations. And then, once we have the TAC, then we call everybody here and have had an open meeting to discuss the recommendations and any of our concerns based on those recommendations and concerns other than that is how we I think we've handled it in the past and maybe a good way to do it. So I would have them continue in getting on the TAC bandwagon and in front of them.
Yeah, I I took a little note. I think the previous chair did a good job of doing this at Crescent Street, so I was going to use that playbook.
Yeah. Absolutely. I agree. I think there, as Greg mentioned, and you have mentioned, that there's a lot more than just TAC ins and outs.
Thank you, and that's that's understood. And like I said, once we we make that step to refine, we'll we'll have more in-depth plans, but you know, we thought that the the traffic ins and outs, the site distance, that sort of thing will dictate some of the site design. So that'll refine things, and then as we get closer to that, we'll we'll come back to the board, but obviously, the board will be copied on all our submissions and correspond.
Thank you.
So with that, are we ready to move to design elements?
Well, this is where I'm stuck, Mr. Pano. How how do we go to design elements if we don't know what the massing is? If we don't know what the massing is going to be, how can we talk about strategies to break down the massing vertically, horizontally? How it's going to fit into the neighborhood? This is why I'm a little stuck, and this is why I was a little frustrated when I said I was underwhelmed with what was submitted here. That, the massing discussion is going to drive architecture as well. So to talk about architecture without knowing what mass we have seems maybe spinning our wheels a little bit. I don't know. I'll ask my fellow board members their opinion on this. That's kind of where my head is. If you if if folks want to go through and look through architectural elements, I don't know if it's the best use of all our time tonight, quite frankly, because it it really, it comes down to the massing in the site plan, which will be driven by the number of units, which could change the site plan, the number of parking spots, all those things. So I'll turn it, I'll turn to my fellow board members and see what they're feeling and their thoughts.
I have an overall note. You know, not getting into the nitty-gritty, but just as a taking a thirty thousand foot view, if we're talking about design as a whole and not necessarily elements, is I don't think this takes any cue from the neighborhood whatsoever. It's a urban building, a lot of brick, a lot of gray. If we're going to put it where it is, why don't we look at its houses around it? Why don't we make this you know, sort of like we've done with other other of our projects, you know, fit, look more residential, look more, I don't know, you know, slowly lawyer, not a designer, so I don't know the terms, but more shingle, more residential housing look rather than a big urban building. You know, I think that's all I can bring out tonight. So, Mr. Chair.
Well, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to go through the board and hear what my colleagues have to say.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Chair, in my opinion, this might be the time to set up the committee to work and start looking at some of this stuff offline so not to to redesign it here or to ask and get all those questions until we're ready to come back. So maybe it's time to set up the subcommittee because it sounded like that's what Mr. Panos wanted to do prior to making any decisions or really making any real changes to anything presented tonight from the last time.
Okay. Assuming?
I just want to point out a couple of things, like I was looking at the plan. Oh, yeah, that was submitted. That's gonna affect the unit numbers. Definitely needs to be like a smaller scale. This is too big, but I didn't see anything you're proposing hundred unit apartment building, but I didn't see anything like residential amenity spaces inside. Especially, I didn't see any mailrooms. I don't see any package rooms. So if you have a hundred unit, you at least need thirty five feet of the wall for the mailrooms. And with that amount of the unit, you should have at least like a hundred to hundred fifty square feet of package room. That's going to take out probably like one or two parking spot from the the ground floor. And you're talking about it's friendly to walk to downtown Wakefield, and I don't see why you don't have a direct entrance from the Nahant Street for, because you're forcing everybody to walk around the driveways in the parking spot to get into the main building. So that's another things like you probably want to look at it. And then another thing I noticed was you have the your trash room all the way in the back by the stairs, but you have a residential parking spot, like a resident parking spot right in front of it. So I don't think that should be a resident parking spot either. So that's gonna take out like the couple parking spots from the site already. I I think you should definitely look at the plan inside too. And I don't see anything like. And I don't see anything like stacking rooms like in. Every floors for all the utilities going through for the hundred units. I I don't think inside is also not like slowly planned out. You definitely want to look at those things.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Tom, this is Joe. I agree with you. I feel like we're spinning our wheels. A month ago, we all sat here and said it was too big, too tall, not enough parking spots, and they had a month of work on this, and they basically just came back with the same thing. So. I agree with, you know, with Chip, we got to get a subcommittee together, but. First thing on my mind is take take a floor off, take two floors off. I'm sure they're not going to want to hear that, but I mean. In the past, when we've had buildings come to us like this, and we've, you know, we've all made our comments, and they've come back with at least a floor off. Or at least a reduction in units. They didn't. They didn't even try, so. You know, there's something to think about.
Anybody else?
No, just Mr. Chair, I could the other comments. I think that's where we are. We got to get a subcommittee and and dive into. Where this thing needs to, where this thing needs to go in detail for this board to feel comfortable. As a board moving forward, so.
Agree. Anybody else?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if the. I mean, the subcommittee has been very substantive for projects that we've had before, so. Just for the proponent to understand that. It it's going to be a very short subcommittee meeting if it's this is how it is. That's it. That needs to be a spirit of working. I haven't heard one inch of a word that there's any spirit of working with anybody. To make relevant and important safety changes to this building. But this should be a substantive process, and some of the things Joe talked about are going to be the things that are talked about in the subcommittee. Cut it in half.
Okay, thanks, Mickey. All right, with that. I think Mr. Panos is, you know, I think we're better off. Putting this presentation on hold, having the board create a subcommittee and and get to work there. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts. So I want to be accommodating to the applicant as well.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, but I want to make it very clear. We are in the context of a comprehensive permit. And we are not going to start from the get-go. Making density concessions when we haven't even begun peer review. When we haven't even begun a process that results in a required density reduction. It just isn't the way the comprehensive permit statute and the supporting regulations were. I've been doing this for twenty years, and I've never. Come out of the gate. We had our first hearing on December thirteenth. I've never come out of the gate with a density reduction. I've come out of the gate, I've I've resulted in a density reduction as the process. Unfolds and peer review reveals substantive issues regarding safety. And parking, but we haven't even had parking and traffic studied on this. So how can we talk about density reduction? With all due respect, that's why I'm confused. About this discussion of not being prepared to discuss massing. We're prepared to discuss massing. We've proposed a project.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
If I may, Jason, has this gone to traffic yet? Do we have a traffic study?
We had a traffic scoping study. And the traffic study is being worked on right now in the context of the scoping study that T A C. Asked of us. They asked us to look at, we didn't want to go out and do a traffic study and miss the mark. So T A C asked us, and I think Tony Capachetti, who was there, can speak to this in more substance. But they asked us to look at a number of intersections. And in the context of proposed improvements that the town has in place. To those intersections, and they wanted us to study those intersections in light of those potential improvements that the town has in the works. So that's being worked on right now. Also, I know we alluded to this on December thirteenth. Within the context of the traffic study, I talked about the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission Perfect Fit. Parking absorption study that is also going to be folded into the traffic study as well. And it will talk about expected parking absorption. On a development such as this. So we'll be getting into all of that, but no. We have no submission to T A C yet, but it is.
You're waiting for the metropolitan planning?
No, we're not waiting for that. That that perfect fit traffic study, parking absorption study. Is all done. We are just going to be incorporating some of those findings into our own. Traffic study, which will affect traffic circulation within the site. These are the elements that will be addressed. And that will be, I I'm told, will be prepared in time for the next hearing. In in February, but I can't commit to that because I I'm waiting to hear from my traffic engineer. They are diligently working on their traffic study, however. So it is forthcoming.
Okay, well. I've been on this board a long time, and I've never, even with comprehensive permits before, has had. Applicants not willing to at least engage in discussions. I mean, it's pretty obvious to most people that have looked at this, a public safety matter. Public safety experts from the town, both in the fire department, and you saw the the. Memo from the D P W have serious concerns about this, and it is based on massing. It is based on scale of the project. So for you to be surprised to hear this from the board, I I'm having a hard time with that.
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised at all, Mr. Chairman. I'm I'm just, I'm just explaining our position on this. We are perfectly willing to have a constructive conversation. We have a long road ahead of us, and I acknowledge that, but that is typical of the comprehensive permit. One, one thing that I I almost live by is this. M H P zoning board of appeals handbook. I I I refer to it often. And it will tell you, and I'm sure you you're familiar with it, but we just don't discuss density until. The peer review leads us to that, and right now we haven't even started peer review.
So what are we looking at?
Okay. Yeah, Mickey, I'm going to cut this off right here because we're spinning our wheels. I I I'm just going to end it with this, Mr. Panos. I would hope there would have been a little bit more accommodation. To willing to to be willing to work with us. What I'm hearing is pretty much that you're. You're not going to be very flexible, so and I hope that's not the case.
I'm I'm sorry you're saying, I'm sorry you feel that way. I just want. To be a little more diligent about this than taking town comments, which, you know.
I take the town comment from a fire chief very seriously, Mr. Panos. I take the town comments from our D P W very seriously. Those are subject matter experts. And we rely on them from our town, and they do a good job. So I'm not going to be dismissive of those comments, and please don't ask this board to be. That's not an appropriate request from an applicant. So with that board, what I think I'm going to do. Is I think I want to be on this subcommittee. And I want to help lead this process. I'm gonna, there's a couple more coming up. Chip, I'm going to ask you if you're available to serve on this as well. Chip, you there?
Sorry, I was muted. I accepted your invitation prior to being unmuted.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Panos, Mr. Taubella, myself. Will constitute the the subcommittee on this thing.
Okay, which I guess would be considered peer review.
Right, and what we'll do.
Your words, Mr. Panos, is that, is that your thought?
Well, typically, peer review is run by consultants that the town hires and the applicant pays for.
I can tell you, in all our processes, we've never done that.
Sure.
Knowledge on the board, and we have plenty of town officials, engineering departments, safety officials. That review the projects who have never hired outside console. Just so you know.
So Greg, you were going to say something?
Yeah, and just as a point, we we already let the applicant know that. He asked that at the first meeting. We told him that we run peer review right through us. We may hire. A a consultant like Ezra, but other than that. We already mentioned that we we run peer review through us. If there's any. Or we are our own reviewers. We run it through the town. If there's any question about that, it was already answered.
Okay, so we we have a subcommittee at this point. So I think what we'll do is Chip and I will reach out with some availability and try to get these meetings going right away.
Excellent.
And we'll go from there. Any other comments or questions from the board before I'm going to ask to. Go to the public.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask through you, the applicant send us electronic versions of all the materials? I I just, what we got. For this meeting was just a few PDFs, but like all the site plans, all the materials we got in paper form as part of the application. Can we get PDFs or like material electronically, please?
Is that possible, Mr. Panos?
Yes, the only additional item. I I believe the town has all of our plans in PDF. They have everything. The only additional item is this PowerPoint we were prepared to give tonight. Which has a lot of duplicate to information, but for the supplemental materials that were submitted last week. So we're happy through Stefano and Tony to resubmit. In electronic format, everything we've given to the board.
We we have that, or you have a copy, or Gail, we have. I don't know that it's come through all the board members.
Yeah, I don't believe we have a PDF. We were given paper copies, I believe.
That's the case. We're happy to accommodate. Tony, I'm sorry, through the chair. Can you corral that?
Yes, I have a Dropbox that I think was provided, but it may have gotten lost someplace in translation. So I can get that over to Gail and get that link circulated. So everything we have is is up in that. Actually, it's a OneDrive.
Actually, Jake, it is. It is that area.
I got a copy, a link to the OneDrive where you sent for this meeting, and it has new renderings and sweatbath. If there's some other folder, then please reshare it.
Yeah, please reshare it. Might go back to the original filing date, which is why it might, to Tony's point, it might have got lost in the shuffle ticket. But if you could reshare that, so it's the top of everyone's inbox, that would be greatly appreciated.
Is there a disappointing information? Is there a town Dropbox as well? Because aren't these materials on your website? Or are they? They're not. Okay, we're we're happy to give you in whatever format you want, the materials we've submitted today. That's not an issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
And and as well, Mr. Chair, are we going to set up a spot like we do with some of these boards?
No, I'll I'll talk to Gil about finding a spot on our webpage somewhere. I agree that that was my next thing.
Okay, yeah, to Mr. Panos' point, yeah, we we don't have one now, but we typically do for these kinds of projects. We certainly can. So that's submittals that come before us, get posted there, and then members of the public can refer to them and any interested party. So they're all. In a spot, however they're stored, but they're available through our town's website.
Does Mr. Tarbell and the chair want to try and schedule a a meeting now?
No.
Okay.
We'll do it via email. I got to look at my work schedule. I can't do it off the top of my head here. I'd also, I want to open this up to the public, in case there are neighbors here that would like to comment on what they've heard tonight. If you could stop sharing, so I could see who the the Zoom screen, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public here that wish to testify or speak on this matter? If so, please use the raised hand function and Zoom. Hearing seeing none, back to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, in light of the. Status of the subcommittee, do we just continue this for? A month, you know, because the subcommittees could take several meetings between now and then. And we could just recontinue if if there's, you know, they're not ready to come back to this full board, right?
Right, I would, that's why I would do it for the next meeting. Just trying to keep this moving along, and then if there's nothing substantive to present, we can continue after that.
And we'll certainly let the applicant know so that they don't have to bring people that it's our intention to continue, so they don't have to pay for their consultants to be here.
What what typically has happened on the ones that I've worked on, whether it's Tarrant Lane or other ones, is that when. We kind of all decide together that we're still working or moving forward or. Doing whatever we're doing, but there's nothing really substantive. We report back that. We're making progress and, you know, we'll be ready in another two weeks or whatever. Or if there's something we feel that it's necessary to bring to the full board, we would then. Bring it to the full board. So I do think we should only continue it to our next hearing.
And just as a point to that, remember the extensions are not in our control, so I think we want to show every effort that we are moving forward, so. Anytime there is an opportunity to just continue the next meeting, I think that's important for the record.
Yep.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we continue this matter to our February fourteenth meeting.
Motion's been made in seconded inning discussion. Hearing seeing none. Voting members on this will be Dave, Chip, Joe, Mickey, and myself. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matters continue. Thank you for your time, Mr. Panos. Look forward to together to try to better organize our approach to this on both sides.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, do you anticipate these meetings to happen in person or on Zoom?
I prefer in person, but I got to talk to Chip.
I do too, just for the record, in person.
I'm I'm fine in person. My work schedule is pretty tough, so it's usually late afternoons, early evenings.
We'll do anything to accommodate.
Yep, great.
Thank you.
Where's your office?
My office is in Peabody, right off Route one fourteen.
Great, okay. We can also get a room in town if necessary, so.
And Tony Capachetti's office right around the corner, so at Hayes. Yeah, so I don't want to volunteer, but I'm sure we can accommodate there too.
Great, thank you so much. All right, I'm going to move on. Next case up is case twenty four, twenty five, twenty four, twenty six, twenty four, twenty seven. Richard Hubbard and Carol Hubbard, one seventeen New Salem Street.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing Richard and Carol Hubbard. Their property at one seventeen New Salem Street. Hubbard's are run here somewhere, but I will take the bulk and they'd be happy answering questions that might come up. What they're proposing to do is put in addition on their existing single family dwelling at one seventeen New Salem Street. And then they've also applied for a special permit for an accessory apartment. In the dwelling and is has become typical of variance from some of the requirements of section one ninety twenty two A, one F. So I think usually what will happen is we can talk about if it's okay with you, the addition first, because that's step one. And the relief that is needed for the addition that they're requesting to put on the property.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to bring that up. Here we go.
How are you sharing the screen?
Carol, can you, um, mute?
Yeah, I can.
Great, thank you.
Just give me a moment. I apologize. I'm not quick.
I'm having a hard time, uh, rotating this, that's odd. Kind of often be loaded. Sorry about that. Having a hard time loading it up. Here we go. Wow, that was an effort. Sorry about that. I apologize for the delay. So this is, um, you can see this is somewhat of a unique shaped lot. Uh, it's right on New Salem Street at the end of Appleton Road. As you come out of the industrial district, as you're facing the property to the right. Is the industrial district, uh, heading up towards, uh, Salem Street. And as you go left, you're heading to, uh, the, uh, the other part of, or I should say Vernon Street. And if you, uh, come out of the property and take a right, you're heading down towards Salem Street. Um, so what the, what the Hubbard's are looking to do, um, in the red outline is the existing, uh, structures on the property. Um, and they're looking to put a modest addition, uh, sixteen by, uh, twenty-one approximately on the side. It's a. Cave card style home. In the addition, we'll, we'll, you'll see in the floor plans on the, um, architectural, um, uh, components to the, um, accessory apartment. Um, they, there's a lot of detail on this plan because, uh, they had to go to the Conservation Commission. Uh, in order to obtain, um, the necessary relief from them for the addition, uh, that has been accomplished. Uh, and they've, they've completed that process. So as far as the conditions, um, uh, as far as I should say, the relief that they're looking for for the addition. Um, if you refer to the, uh, zoning table. Up on the right, you can see that, uh, they are in the single residence district. Uh, the minimum lot area is twelve thousand. They have fifteen thousand and change. They meet the upper requirement under the bylaw. They have excessive frontage, a hundred is required, one ninety-six, uh, forty-nine. Um, believe it or not, they meet the coefficient of regularity for lot shape, so it's not non-conforming. Uh, it's over the point six five. Um, the, uh, front setback is a current deficiency. Um, the requirement is twenty. And, um, the existing is nineteen point eight. The addition is gonna be twenty point two one, but it does non-conform on the front setback. Uh, where the relief is needed on the finding is on, as you face the property. On the, uh, east side, the side setback is fifteen required. Currently it's fourteen, not complying, and it's gonna go to nine, nineteen point one, this deck that is gonna get added on. So that is going to. Increase or intensify that in this existing non-conformity that requires. Uh, a finding and it's not substantially more detrimental. The other side has plenty of setback. Um, as you can see, fifteen required again. It's, uh, with even with the addition, it's gonna be one twenty-five point oh three. Uh, same with the rear twenty-five required. Sixty-two point seven existing, and it's gonna be a little bit closer at fifty-two point four two, but well in compliance. Uh, building height, uh, not even close, thirty-five is allowed. It's not, it's currently twenty-three point nine and it's gonna stay that. It's only a one and a half story property. And the maximum lot coverage, thirty percent. It's gonna go from ten up to twelve. Minimum open area, uh, forty percent. It's currently eighty-one percent. And, um. Because of stuff that's happening with pavement and stuff being removed with conservation, it's gonna stay at eighty-one percent. So for the finding, we're looking for finding that the, although, uh, the addition. Uh, in- intensifies or increases the non-conformity on the side yet setback is not substantially more detrimental. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Brian, I noticed I went by the property and I noticed that. The proposed addition. I think as best I can figure. Goes on the pavement to the garage. Are they closing off access to the garage?
Uh, Carol, can you answer that? After you unmute?
Yep, there we go. Sorry, guys. I'm, I'm not as quick. Um, yes, we, we are gonna close off the access to the garage. It's just gonna be for storage only. Which it currently is. That's all I've ever used.
Okay.
It's full.
Like most of our garages.
Right. I've never put a car in it.
Okay.
Okay. Unmute again.
Where are you gonna park cars?
Right up front. There's a driveway up front too.
It, it would be like on the side.
But aren't you gonna need more than, that looks like two spaces to me. And if we're doing an in-law, then. We're probably gonna have three or four cars, I would think.
And they've got, uh, uh, gravel here, Chip, existing compacted gravel on the side.
So that's gonna become a part of the parking lot?
Yeah, they already parked there.
Yeah, we already parked there.
Okay. I guess I must have hit it when people weren't home. Okay. That's all I had.
Brian, any, any plans for this? Any drawings? This is it?
This is pretty much it. It's a basic addition onto, I mean, and the only relief is really on the deck, Joe. Uh, but it's only gonna be, it's just gonna basically be adding on to the length of the cape.
Yeah, no worries. It's usually you have it in your back.
Right, as people think about that, I'll just add, uh, got letters from both the fire department who has no objection to the project. DPW has no objection other than that they'll talk to the property owner about the, uh, INIP.
So Brian, did you say there's an accessory apartment involved too?
Yes, that's, that's.
Could present it all together or?
Um, I can do that, Greg, whatever, whatever the preference of the board is.
It seems to all go together.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think we want it all together. And then again, because the applications for. A special permit for the accessory apartment and finding and a variance, so.
Yep, that's fine.
And then we can determine how we proceed from there.
Okay.
No, good catch, cause that's, uh, that's who the, uh, that's what the comments were really on from the town department.
Sure. This is kind of, you'll kind of see how this, uh. Addition kind of works. So. I guess the place to start is, um. The lower level, um, the lower level. Uh, there's, it's a cape, so you get a lower level, then you have. If, what we call the first floor and the second floor, uh, which is the cape. So low level is kind of like the basement type area. Um, and in the lower level, currently the existing condition is up top. Um, it already has a kitchen in it. Um, it's not used as an accessory apartment. Now it's gonna be used as a accessory apartment. Um, Carol's sister Patty is planning on moving in there. Um, so that's why they're going through this process to, to do it legally. Um, so, um, what's gonna happen here is here's the addition that gets added on. In on, in the part of the addition, that's gonna be the accessory apartment, which we've applied for a variance for. Um, is, is, uh, gonna be a bedroom in a mudroom that's gonna get attached. And then you have the kitchen, living area, et cetera. So that's on the lower level. That will comprise the accessory apartment. On the first floor level, which Carol and Richard and their family live, um, you can kind of see the existing here. And here's where the addition is on that. It's gonna be two bedrooms. That are gonna get added on. And then the, um, second floor level. Um, is not gonna change. There's two bedrooms. That go with the main unit where Carol and Richard live. So the breakdown on this is. You can see that the, um. The, uh. Ha- the habitable area of the accessory apartment, the accessory apartment is eight hundred eighty-five square feet. And the habitable area, um, is. It is, um. Thirty-four point nine percent. So that's one of the, it's over the twenty-five. It's, it's in excess of the required three hundred feet. Under the bylaw, but, um, it's over the twenty-five percent. Um, as the board knows, we, um, at your discretion, you can allow that to happen. Um, if it's, if you determine it's warranted, typically with houses like this that are up and down. Um, you found that to be warranted. It's not excessively over the twenty-five percent.
Brian, what is the deck they're building, the new one? I don't see on the new plan.
One more time, uh, cause whom you, I'm sorry, I got.
Uh, the deck they're adding on the east side of the house?
Yeah, he didn't, he just did these as floor plans. He didn't include it on there, but it's on the site plan.
But you already, you already have the stair in the little landing outside of the kitchen on the first floor.
Let me see where are you here?
May I answer that? Yes, there, there currently is. Um, stairs that go up to a very small landing. All I was requesting was to extend it. I, I'm not good at feet. Like to the end of my house. I know that means nothing to you, but. It, that's what really is being just extended back out to the end of the house. Um.
So you can come from, you can go to the kitchen door from the, the front?
There, there currently is a kitchen door out to a deck that is in dire need of being replaced. Um, and all I've asked is if I could just expand it a little bit because my door hits. It, the way it's built right now. It's just, it, there's a little area, I think.
Right here.
You can see the arrows.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I just asked to extend it a tad. But I know by doing that, it's a little closer to the property, so.
And then you are adding the walls and doors to the deck or that deck? It's like, oh. Just a stair in the deck and no roof, no. No walls?
No, no, just, just, just as it is right now. It's just stairs that go up to a deck. There's a railing. But that's, that's it.
Gonna be open.
But it, it's not.
It's gonna be open, okay.
Yeah, it's open, whatever. Thank you.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's going from. Um, the way that is, it's, it's, it, that setback is gonna change from fourteen to nine point one. And it went a little bit. So what he did is the fourteen is the house. And this was really kind of rickety, so, you know, it, so it, it goes to nine point one, so it further encroaches.
Okay.
There's already a deck there, Brian?
Yeah, but not as big, Chip. It's kind of. You can see.
Well, the existing says nine point three, so it looks like you're only going. Two or inches.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're right. It, it, but what happens is you can't. You can, you can open decks under our bylaw and extend, and extend. Five feet into the setback. This just barely ma- makes it, so. So just to be conservative, we showed the fourteen and, and you're right, it's, it's, it's really. It's.
Really just a continuation of a non-conformity.
That's all, yeah, I mean.
It's not, and, but that's what you're asking for the variance for, right?
No, we didn't ask for variance. We asked for a finding.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no variance being requested at all?
Various being requested is for what? The, um, the addition being part of the accessory apartment.
Okay.
Because they, under the, you know, under that paragraph.
You're not allowed to do that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So what we're asking for is we're asking for a finding. For the addition in the deck because of the, the, the front setback isn't met currently.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then the deck. Uh, encroachment further out. So we're asking for finding on that. We're asking for the board to allow the accessory apartment to be more than twenty-five percent. Um. Under one ninety, um. Uh, twenty-two, one F. Um, and then we're also under that section asking for a variance to, um, which from paragraph seven, which says the. Accessory apartment shall not involve an extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling. And that's it.
Any other comments, questions? That the entirety of your presentation, Brian?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, as board members think about it, I will open it up to public. Very members of the public that are here to comment about this proposal. If so, please use the raised hand. Function in Zoom. Hearing, seeing none, uh, back to the board. Any other comments or questions? More pleasure of the board.
Just getting the plans correct. Brian, the, the plans we have in our record are the latest, right?
No, the one I just sent wanted to share. Thank you, uh, let me share it again, Dave, because the, it, it just got updated this week.
The concom.
Yeah, um, yeah, yep, so, um. It's a revised date of January four.
And that's the same date as the architectural. Drawings that were shown, okay? It was January fourth as well.
And. See on those, hold on.
The lower right.
Yeah, those have it, and those, and those were updated a little bit too, just for clarification, so. They've changed. I've sent those to you, Mr. Chair, today at the Gail.
Okay.
Yeah, you have them on your email. But the date is January four. Because I think what you're gonna look at, Dave, is the ones that you got on the architectural plans had the wrong calculation for habitable area. I think it had something like forty-nine percent.
What is it really?
Thirty-four, thirty-four point nine, nine percent.
Okay.
In a total of eight hundred and eight, eight eighty-five point eight oh for the accessory apartment.
Okay, so the architectural's gotta have a new date than one-four if it has corrections on it, right?
He didn't put a new date. We can put a new date. We can date them. We can date them today. I'll get those dated today.
Okay.
Yep. So they will be dated, dated today.
Okay, so where we need all three. Mr. Chair, and through you, Brian, uh, we can do the finding. And then. The variance.
Yep.
Or the special permit.
Variance first. Yeah, I see variance and a special permit.
Okay.
Can't allow the special permit until the addition is made.
Until we have the find, yeah, the variance, okay. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty-eight. Of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. That the pro- proposed reconstruction changes, alterations at one seventeen New Salem Street. Based on the plans. Um, of course, I didn't look at the name. Who was this? How do you pronounce her name, Stephen?
Matusak. No, Cuzik.
Okay, him, sorry. January fourth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um. Although they shall do increase the existing non-conforming nature of the structure. Um, in particular, the side setback. We find that the proposed, uh, changes shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
Second now.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing, seeing none, regular board members and Greg, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant a variance pursuant to one ninety sixty-six of the bylaw. For the property at one seventeen Salem Street. Based on the same plans stated above. Going to circumstances related to. Uh, lot shape, topography and structures on the lot. That a little enforcement of provisions in this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. To the petitioner, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment. To the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. Specifically, we're granting a variance of the requirements of one ninety twenty-two. A one F. Seven. Um, that involves the enlargement of the principal dwelling. Uh, in concert with the proposal to, uh. Install an accessory apartment.
Second.
Right, motion's been made in second and, and discussion. Hearing, seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we grant a special permit. For the addition of an accessory apartment at the, um. Look, dwelling, uh, at one seventeen New Salem Street. Uh, based on the same plans as previously referenced. Uh, in accordance with all the paragraphs. Uh, in that section, we find, um, are met. Uh, in accordance with all the paragraphs, uh, in that section, we find um are met. Uh, it, with the exception of apartment size, it does exceed the twenty-five percent of habitable area for the proposed accessory apartment. And it will be as presented tonight and on the latest plan, uh, dated today of thirty-four point nine percent of the habitable area. But all other paragraphs are met and um we grant the special permit um based on the plans presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion.
One quick discussion. Will we at this area also add that we're not gonna ask for surety?
Yes.
That goes with this one, right?
Yes.
Yes, that they'll have to submit a letter, a chair stating that can, that the situation is unchanged or that, yep. Instead of a bond or surety, correct? So that is in paragraph four. Um, so uh, I'll amend the motion to include that stipulation. Okay, Brian?
Yeah, good catch, Chip. Okay. On the uh friendly amended emotion, Joe, that Joe seconded, uh, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Next up, new hearings, case twenty-four thirty, case twenty-four thirty-one at ten Central Street.
Attorney Brian McGreal here on that uh matter also, Mister Chair, representing Joseph Don Allen, Christina uh Tamer and Bridget Tamer. Um, they are collectively have ownership interest in the property at uh ten Central Street. This also involves an accessory apartment. Um, believe it or not, it does not involve an addition. So, um, so I'm going to um start, I guess, by. Sharing the site plan. It does involve a variance, however, and I'll explain why.
There, did an addition?
The ground addition.
Yeah, they actually.
What the garage, we're putting rooms under it.
Yeah. So. So this is a property at ten Central Street. Um, as you can see, they have a zoning table. And as you know, one of the requirements under uh paragraph two of um one ninety twenty-two, A-one, F. Two states that have an accessory apartment on the lot, it has to uh meet uh the lot area in the lot with requirements of the, of the zoning district. This is a single-family uh district, so the requirement, as you can see, is twelve thousand square feet. Um, and they, they do meet that requirement, however, they do not meet the lot width. Uh, because the lot width is only eighty feet, as you can see from the frontage in the rear, eighty feet. And it will be a hundred required. So we're asking for a variance from that requirement. Is that big enough? Can you see it? You can see the frontage up here, eighty feet.
So you're saying lot width, you, you talk about frontage?
Well, it's one of the same on this lot because eighty, eighty feet in the front and eighty feet in the back.
Okay, right.
So it's, it's, it's a quirky thing in our bylaw. It says, you know. Uh, they have an accessory apartment, a lot on which it will be located must meet the minimum lot area and lot with requirements of the applicable zone. So.
Would this be a finding?
No, it's a variance from the special permit requirement that you have to meet lot width.
Okay.
Yeah. It's one of the, one of the, one of the uh, one of the requirements, just like, you know, you can't put an addition on, you gotta meet lot width. That's paragraph two in lot area. No idea why they have that there, but they do. Um, so that's the variance request. I think the unique circumstances is they don't meet lot width. And the hardship is they can't have a uh, an accessory apartment without it. So um, that's the need for the variance. And then. The architectural. You know, on this property, in the main house, uh, Joe, Don Ellen and Christina Tamer, they're gonna live there with their daughter. Um, and then uh Christina, Christina's mom, um, Brady, also known as Bridget, she is um going to live in the accessory apartment.
You need that all those dimensions somewhere.
Yeah, so I'm gonna show you, this is the. Bring this up, Chip. This is the architectural. So we, we actually meet all the requirements here because you can see the little area of the house where the accessory apartment is here delineated. On the plans. And, you know, I'm not gonna go upstairs. There's really no need to. Um, so it just says, uh, four hundred fifty-one. Gross of gross habitable living area, seventeen point six percent of the house area. So, um, it is over the three hundred square feet and is under the twenty-five percent requirement. So we're looking for a fairly straightforward special permit. Um, with the variance on the lot width.
Okay, uh, add to that, board members, uh, heard from the fire department who has no objections, seeing from DPW. No objections, they'll connect with the homeowner on uh the ionized fee if approved. Any comments or questions from the board?
Oh, seems straight, pretty straightforward to me, uh, Mister Chair. Uh, through you, Brian.
Well, as long as there's no public that wants to speak towards it.
No, no, I, we haven't got there yet, Chip.
Yeah, well, Dave was about to do it.
No, no, I was about to ask of just about the plan. I, I can't read it, Brian.
Sure. Which one, Dave?
That. The architectural.
Okay.
Like, who, who, who did them and what's the date on it?
Yep.
Yeah, their, the copy is not great.
Yeah, it's kind of on, on, on old school paper.
I can't even read the other date. I can see the RJ O'Connell and Associates, but I can't read the date.
Yep. So hang on, William Turville is the architect, T U R V I L L E. And the plan is dated uh twelve, 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 two, twenty-three.
The site is RJ O'Connell and Associates. I don't, I can't read the dates to them.
Yep, I got it. It's RJ O'Connell and Associates and uh it is dated, um. It's signed, the signature date on the engineer is four fifteen twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. But the proposal seems straightforward to me, Mister Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing, seeing none, I am going to open this up to the public. If there's a member of the public here that would like to comment on this. Application, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Seeing none, back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mister Chair, I move that we grant the variance pursuant to one ninety sixty-six of the zoning bylaw. Um, for the property at ten Central Street, uh, based on the plans, um. We just discussed architectural plans, William Turville, dated December second, twenty twenty-three. Site plan, RJ O'Connell Associates, four fifteen twenty-two. Owing to circumstances related to the uh shape of the lot, a little enforcement of provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship. Financial or otherwise, the petitioner and the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying. Or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. And the specific requirement we're wa- waiving is for the um. In concert with a request for a special, um, for an accessory apartment, in accordance with one ninety twenty-two, A-one, F, paragraph two. Um, that accessory apartments um must meet minimum lot area and lot width and this property, this lot does not meet that lot width. Um, it is eighty feet versus the required one hundred and we're. Request, um, making a motion to vary that requirement. That's my motion.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion. Hearing, seeing none, we'll do regular voting members and Mickey this time. Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, Mister Chair, I move that we grant a special permit related to the request at one uh ten Central Street, um, for an accessory apartment. Uh, that we reviewed the plans as previously uh. Uh, stated, um, and it meets all the requirements of um. The bylaw for an accessory apartment, including um. The size of the apartment, the uh, and that it is uh. Um, not more than the required twenty-five percent of the habitable area of the, of the uh structure. Um, and that in lieu of a, a bond or surety, the board will uh. Request that a letter be uh submitted annually stating current uh condition of the uh family situation of Maine's place. Or else, uh, you know, the, you know, accessory apartment must be removed.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made in second in any discussion. Hearing, seeing none, same voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, board members, on to other matters. There are two that are listed on the agenda and a third one has come up. Uh, related to Noria Gas Station that should be, uh, in my opinion, very quick. But let's start with the first one, twenty-eight Lafayette Street, uh. Brian Prue and Laura Stern, minor modification.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, uh, attorney Brian McGreal for uh Lauren Stern and Brian Prue. Um, owners of twenty-eight Lafayette Street in Wakefield. Um, um, Lauren and Brian were before the board approximately a year ago. Uh, regarding in addition to their beautiful home at twenty-eight Lafayette Street on the back. You probably remember it when I showed you the plans. And they're doing, I think, they're actually reducing the scope of what they're doing, but they just wanna get a minor modification, which the building department will require. Um, for their records to reflect what uh, what's actually happening on the property. So with that said. And you'll probably remember this, um. This is the site plan from when the project was approved about a year ago. Uh, if you recall, the, the Prues have this Astor Home on Lafayette Street, the back of the, of the house was an addition that's in. Uh, dire disrepair, uh, uh, dire state of disrepair. Um, and you can kind of uh see. Uh, what's happening. Um, this little dot or hash showed what was there, and then they had a proposed addition in the back. Um, and it was going to be five point one feet and it was, um, the way it was done. It was just. Get to the zoning table on this. It was existing at five point one, so there was no change, but they received a, a finding from your board. Um, and then. To show you the scope of the addition compared to what they're doing now. Or what they wanna do now. These were the plans that were part of the uh finding, the approval. So it'll be, I'm gonna get to the three D to the chase, so, so this. Just move my. This is the um existing elevation and this was the addition. You can see two stories going on the back with the deck. That's from the rear. Again. That was the existing. And proposed the two-story, and then there's a three-D model that really is, is good. This was the existing condition. You can see it's, it's like one story, and this is what was proposed. In allowed. So if you can just put that in your memory bank, and I'm gonna show you how they wanna change this big addition in the back. This was kinda too complicated to put it in clouds next to each other. So to start. And this is, I think, the most important thing to the board, in my opinion. Is that if you look at the setbacks now, if you remember, it was five point one, they're actually trimming it back to five point two, so it's gonna be further away. Get to the architecturals. So this comes off the bat now. You can see that's, that is the five point one. Very similar to what they did. Or were planning on doing. This is, this is facing it from, coming from town hall, heading towards the lake. This is the front of the building, which isn't changing, and you can see how they've really, this is from the side. Where the addition is, you can see how they've really tapered it down now, what they've, they've really reduced it instead of making it up high. And they've tapered it down in the back. So as I've mentioned, they've really reduced the scope of this pretty significantly. They've pulled it back. I would respectfully suggest it's a minor modification of the finding. Uh, and request that you approve it as such, so the chair could write a letter to the building department confirming it for the record with the, with these revised plans.
All right, board members, comments or questions?
None for me, seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, a reduction is a reduction, it's minor.
Anybody else? Hearing, seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion. Think for this, we'll do regular voting members and consuming.
So Mister Chair, I move that um. That the proposed alterations uh. And changes to the um. Dwelling at twenty-five, twenty-eight Lafayette Street, um, as presented this evening, uh, plans. Dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four. From Vernon J. and LeBlanc is stamped, uh, uh, prepared by Hayes Engineering. Um, are deemed minor modifications to the previous funding issued by this board.
Second. Just, if I could just point out too, there's architectural plans with this that are by Eight Point Design Inc. Those are the architecturals that I showed you.
Oh, yep, sorry.
Those are also dated one eight, those are dated one eight twenty-four.
All right, so friendly emotion to also include the architectural. Plans that show these changes.
Second the amended motion.
Okay, motion's been made seconded. Hearing, no discussion, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Cause me.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll, I'll prepare a letter, Mister Chair.
Yep, please do. Uh, next up, eight eighty-eight Main Street, Hallmark Health, change signage to Tufts Medicine.
Hi. Um, you guys able to hear me?
Yep. If you could just identify yourself.
Yep, my name's Avasu. Um, I'm from Bass Lines, Auburn. And I, if you guys is good, I can share my screen and just um review.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get the, did you give a first and last name or do you just have one name?
Uh, first name is Avasu, last name's Patel, P A T E L.
Okay. Please do your screen.
Hey. Um, and you guys, are you guys able to see this or?
Yep. Please proceed.
All right, so, um, I'm, I'm representing my client, Tufts Medicine. Um, this is the existing signage right now. Um, they just had a branding change, so they wanted to propose a new sign with the new name and everything. Um, the existing sign is forty-four by ninety-eight. With both sides having um polycarbonate faces and translucent graphics and it's internally illuminated. Um, the new sign will be the same thing. We're not doing anything structurally, um, just changing the faces with the new graphics. And we're, we'll just be painting the retainers and um the frame blue. Um, and that's pretty much it. And this is the night view.
How long, how long is the sign on at night? Do you know?
Um, we're not sure, um, we're not sure who did the original sign, so. Um, we're just keeping it as is, nothing to do with the time or anything, just changing the faces.
Any other questions, board members?
I assume this is because we have jurisdiction over signage on the property.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just not mass, so there's no public, so we can, if someone's ready to make a motion, or?
Yeah, is there a date on these plans? I'm just looking. It's outdated, but.
I don't see one either day.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, find that the present, uh, that the proposed sign changes at eight eighty-eight Main Street uh, is presented, um, by Mr. Partell, last signs in Woburn, Mass, um, to be rebranded from Merrill's Wakefield Medical Building, um, to Tufts Medicine, Merrill's Wakefield Hospital, uh, medical offices, um. Be deemed a minor modification to the board's previous special permit and a relief granted for this, uh, property.
Seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded, uh, bold, regular voting members, and back to Greg. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, you're all set? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Brian, you wanted, uh, next up, uh, the Noria Gas Station at Four Corners? You're on mute, Brian?
Thanks for taking this, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, billing inspector wanted me to, uh, bring this forward. Uh, because if, if it didn't happen, um, tonight, they were gonna have to wait three weeks to, they would have to haul construction. And it's pretty straightforward, what's happened is they, they have a field change because of top, uh, topography issue, and they've got to extend a retaining wall a little bit, and that's what they're requesting to do, I'm gonna show you. So in the back of the site. If you can follow my cursor here, this is the back of the site. And there's already retaining wall here, as you can see, and because of topography issues, um, they've gotta just extend it about forty feet on the side, it's only gonna be about two to three feet high on their property. Not gonna see it.
That's the parking lot of the school on the other side, right?
No, it's kind of where, well.
Well, there's mark, there's.
Part of it is.
Eventually, but not right up against it.
Yeah.
And then the tape is down to nothing.
Happens when you do some grading.
Yeah, it was a grading issue. They had to do with this, they had to move the yard drain to accommodate the electrical service pad. So. It's gonna be about forty feet. That's it.
I, I agree, it's not gonna be seen, so, um, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Who did the plan, Brian, Dave? Right here, Civil Connection LLC. Dated twelve, twenty twenty-three. Or actually, uh, I would go with the Greenman Peterson here. See the Greenman Peterson, Dave? One, two, one, two, twenty-four.
Greenman Peterson.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, find that the updated, um, site plans presented this evening from Greenman Peterson dated January second, twenty twenty-four, that show, um, an extension of the retaining wall on the side of the property, uh, be deemed a minor modification to the board's previously approved special permit, uh, on this project.
Second.
Hey, regular voting members and Mickey. Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appear a letter.
Thank you. That concludes our, um, agenda tonight, folks, uh, we don't have minutes tonight, uh, we expect uh, not a big deal, um. Any clerk comments, Joe, or anyone else from your travels around town, or something that you've seen that you're interested in?
No, um, I got a bylaw view coming with, uh, Boboski on Monday, so I'll keep you informed on that. Uh, I do have a question for Gail, I just got a package from you today um, for next meeting, and it's got two of the same thing in it. Samuel Madison, I don't know if you sent me two by accident and not someone else. But you're on mute, sorry. Yeah. Gail, you're on mute.
Sorry, they're not two separate applications?
No, there's, there's, two, dated two fourteen.
Oh, maybe it just stuck together, throw one away.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if, if some, some of them.
Maybe, maybe I thought I pulled one for Jim, maybe.
No, they were, they were in two different envelopes too, so they said it would be toy. So.
Oh, really? Oh, did anybody not get theirs?
I didn't get an envelope today.
Aha, it belongs to Dave, okay, oh, I'll send you one.
That's all, just didn't want you to be without. Thank you.
Bless you, Mickey.
Bless you.
Any, anybody else? Okay, hey, on that subcommittee, I, I hated to cut everyone off, but once I get going, I was not gonna let any one of you be subjected to, uh, our friend, the attorney there from PBD, so I decided that, uh, I have to suck it up this chair and, and take that one, so.
Thanks, you have to suck me in with you, that's, uh, that's the difficult part.
I'm bringing Luca Cabrazzi with me.
Luca, bro, that's awesome. For luck, hopefully, uh, progress can be made, we'll see where.
I doubt it. We'll see.
We'll see.
He's not budgeted.
We, we, yeah, we can't talk about it now, so just that, I, I, again, just didn't mean to jump in, but I was I did what I did, so, um, anybody else? Other than we really do have to decide, uh, I wrote a note to Steve Mayo, I'm gonna see what the council might do for Jim, and then we should, you know, plan a night for him. Um. As a board, someone said we should, uh, Gail, uh, any help when we start to do that planning of reaching back, like Amy, you know, Kim, some of the folks that he served with, I know would probably wanna at least start. Um, so we could, if we can try to gather that, Chip, if you can go back, and Dave, you guys have been here the longest, people that you think that might wanna come see Jim?
Uh, we could get a room somewhere, and, you know, the architects, the people that have really worked with them closely, I think would like to do something probably.
Yeah.
You know?
Um, because we're there, though, just make sure we be careful on
Oh, yeah.
payments and all that stuff.
On what?
Who's paying for what and gathering and all that stuff.
Oh, no, I just, I'll sponsor it, I don't care.
No, but that could be a problem.
Hmm. I'll have to find out.
Yeah.
Well, not if it's not less, as long as it's less than fifty dollars per person.
Yeah, it's like you just, we pay for our own drinks, that's.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, just be careful doing.
Well, we gotta pick a date, I mean, just gonna get.
Well, we can't, we don't know what his pinochle schedule is.
Right. So I, I, I volunteered to reach out to Jim to find out.
That would be great.
Work for him, I'll get two or three dates, cause I know it's hard, and I don't know what everyone's schedule is now, but while we have this group, does like the off Wednesday nights work? Do you, is it easy to do it another night?
The off Wednesday for me is best, cause I've got stuff on Tuesdays and Thursdays that sometimes pop up.
I'm the same way, I got, it for work, I get Monday, Tuesday, Thursday night meetings, Wednesday tends to work for me, so.
I would say Wednesday or Friday for me.
Okay.
Saturdays are open, so.
Wednesday's, yeah.
All right, I'll grab a few Wednesdays over the next month and so.
Okay.
All right.
I'll see if I can pull up a few names, I'll send you a few names.
I'll see if they can't name it, Jim McBane Day in Wakefield or something from town.
There's now a bylaw that, there's a way to name a street, right? The planning board did that, took it through town meeting.
Uh, uh, I won't ask him to fly a flag, I'll just ask him to.
Yeah.
All right.
McBane Road. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Always in order, and we don't need to, don't need to, that could be voiced, though.